Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, March 14th, 2023. Members, I believe it is officially 10:30. Therefore, our first order of business is we need a motion to waive the rules of council. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The rules have been waived. We can now begin our meeting. Would a clerk please take the role?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Groves.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kail Smith. Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. We will now move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing after that for a moment of silence.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 The agenda has been amended. Our next order of business is proclamations. I believe we have one from Councilman Coghill.
Yeah. If you could just read it into the record, please.
Councilman Coghill presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, March 14th, 2023 to be Christopher Yeager Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Proclamation has been approved. Our next order of business is public comment. Before going on to public comment, I just wanted to let members know, Madam President is on her way in. However, she's dealing with medical emergencies regarding her staff. So we'll pray that all is well, but she is on her way in. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council, and profanity will not be permitted. When you are called, please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bell's Hoover, and also Lima, Peru. No place is safe to go, including Mexico. Indigenous Corps of the Americas. Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Candidate for President 2024, globalintelligencesociety.org. Vote by voter verification and uncensored freedom of speech and public comment are key. The information in my public comment today depends heavily on reports 2000 to 2020 of the National Assessment of Educational Progress provided by the U.S. Department of Education. Concern of council is pre-university numeracy, especially of students of Black African descent. I ascribe equality overall to baby brains. I affirm brain achievement inequality due to competition. Greater than 50% of Pittsburgh students of East Asian descent in 12th grade show proficient in numeracy. Greater than 50% of Pittsburgh students of African descent in 12th grade show below proficient in numeracy. I'm being generous here. It's below basic. How does the core Democratic Party, Gani, Kail Smith, and council concept of equity apply in this case? Shall we assume that the African-American Pittsburgh 12th grader low numeracy rate in info intel skills are due to descriptive-based systemic U.S. Pittsburgh racism, disfavoring African-American kids in education? I think this is false. Their achievement with math barely rising above 8th grade and graduate their ignorance? Shall we assume that Asian-American Pittsburgh 12th graders, high numeracy info intel skills are due to descriptive-based U.S. Pittsburgh racism favoring Asian-Americans? This is false. Their achievement with math raising them on average to 12th grade or above and irrationally ignore them? Numerate proficiency requires an understanding and using an X horizontal, Y vertical coordinate grid. 12th grade students of African descent on average have trouble doing so. Relativize description. 12th graders of East Asian descent on average do not have this problem. Reward achievement. One of the recommendations that I have is the offices of mayor and council should vociferously condemn graduating students who do not have proficiency in numeracy.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Naomi Mullen.
I do not see... Here. Here. I honor my husband, who is a true City of Pittsburgh public servant from the 1970s until 2021. Shady trees, not shady deals in Von Air. This is for you, Michael. According to the Pennsylvania Constitution, the purpose of government is for the peace, safety, and happiness of the people they serve. The Von Air Memorial Green Space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of the Von Air community. Without that, there is no valid governance. Here's the situation. An excellent school was closed. The building has become a threat and detrimental haunt. It should be condemned and sold to the city for a dollar. It must be torn down. Parks and trees, Pittsburgh funds used to make it a green space. The residents of Von Air will care for it as volunteers. Why are we paying taxes for continued detriment? Why should we pay taxes for a detriment? This is right at my husband's funeral. Retired Deputy Chief Mike Mullen touched the lives of many people. His uncompromising dedication to his sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional and one that should be emulated by every firefighter. He loved sharing his knowledge of firefighting and all its many aspects to make our firefighters safer, smarter, and more efficient on the fire ground. Mike knew most of the firefighters on the entire Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire, bided first names, and was always approachable and he would stop what he was doing to answer it. He worked tirelessly but also energetically, his entire career in pursuit of more. His legacy will serve our citizens and firefighters for years to come. Michael J. Mullen lived a full life, as his obituary so accurately describes. Mike was passionate, tireless, dedicated, highly conscientious, and caring. Well done, Michael. Well done. Rest in peace, my friend. Thank you, Doug Vaskevich, for writing that. He did live in Pittsburgh his entire life. Join our supporters, Mayor Gani, Councilman Coghill, and State Representative Benham for the creation of a green space. Shady trees, not shady deals in Von Air. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last registered speaker is Pomai Chakmamya Haley.
(speaking in Pashto) I am East Pomai Chakmamya Haley. I am a Grand Chief, council member of the Arokoak Confederacy of Aboriginal American People, and I'm also the Grand Inka Chief of my own nation, the Onkway Onway Aborigines of the Americas. I want to remind City Council of the obligation that the United States government, who you are under the jurisdiction of, has already established treaties with our people. And these treaties are to be held as the highest form of law, supreme law of the land, because you're on stolen land. And in that, there have been many provisions that have been established in how we interact with each other in a government-to-government capacity that benefits all and respects the rights of our people and respects the rights of our stewardship of our own land. Now, I see the URA and the Land Bank are duly established to delineate land. And with that, I see an issue. I see an issue that our voices are not at the table. I see an issue that our voices are silenced in those capacities. Now, we've reached out to the URA. We've reached out multiple times. We've had major discussions as it relates to certain parcels or places and spaces that we see and deem necessary and viable for our benefit of our offspring. And that would also benefit the larger community as well. In Article 5 of our Delaware Treaty that we have with your people, it's actually Article 5, it says that there is an agreement that the United States guaranteed to our people all territorial rights as bound by all former treaties. These treaties go back to Great Britain before your people got your independence from the corporate structure of Great Britain to be able to have representation. So you wouldn't be taxed without representation. So these conversations must continue in the light, because the light and the sunlight is the best disinfectant. And all of the ill-conceived policies that we've experienced here in the City of Pittsburgh by the hands of city officials and other entities must come to an end and will come to an end, because there is accountability. And there is enforcement of accountability in law for the violation of indigenous rights. So again, I continue to be open and say, let us sit again at the peace talks tables, URA, Land Bank, City Council, mayors, and everyone else who's making decisions on how to delineate and distribute our lands. We are going to take land back into our control that will benefit our people, our children, our posterity. And we'll put you on notice of these different spaces and places. And we are prepared, and I'll speak for myself, I am prepared, to go as far as this has to go for you to do what you are bound by the Constitution to do. That is federal, beyond the state.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. We'll now move on to those here in chambers. Is there anyone in chambers wishing to speak? Please come forward at this time. Please provide your name, neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak.
Yeah, hello. Good morning. I'm Jacob. I'm here to speak in regards to, well, I used to work for PNC Bank in the region, in Shadyside, Skowell, Blomfield, in the branches. And I report to Penny Paraway and Alex Ostrom overseeing the retail branch of PNC Bank. So I was actually fired this Friday, and it was because, not because of my job performance, it's because I applied to 3,000 jobs before that, and I was pulled into the job. And the entire 10 months I worked for PNC Bank, I was being told that customer service is important, and I need to tend to customer surveys. And prior to that, I used to hand out thousands and thousands of human trafficking flyers in Pittsburgh, raising awareness to human trafficking. And I was pulled into the job for 10 months where I was told every single day that customer feedback is important, and customers are reviewing me badly, which was an ulterior way to make me not hand out human trafficking flyers and raise awareness of human trafficking. So I kept doing that despite that, and I was fired this Friday after manufactured customer surveys were used to fire me. So yeah, I'm in the Pittsburgh area because I was bought and sold as a child from Europe. People in this area targeted a Jewish family in Europe because they had Nobel Prizes in science in the family, and they used financing of remote operations to target them to get me from them as a little kid. The abducted family members held in captive, and they made children from them to human traffic here with altered records. I know this because I was in European police custody for about several years as a child while they were investigating this. And I'm here because I was made. They made me. You can't unmake a person. You make a person via rape and slave breeding and stuff like that. They exist. So I'm here handing out thousands and thousands of human trafficking flyers in Pittsburgh, and I'm getting hired into jobs where I'm being harassed into silence and given low wages. I have a PhD from Pet. I used to work for the National Energy Lab, run by Department of Energy in Pittsburgh, for a couple of years. I have inventions, patents, doctorate degrees. They shoved everything into my lab, yet I make no more than $20 an hour. And I worked for 10 months, and I get fired. And then I sent to another job site in Pittsburgh where the same thing happens. I am in a very intense human trafficking network that exploits me every single way because I was literally made, bought, and sold, and transported here from that, from a Jewish family in Europe of German, Hungarian, and French descent. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else in chambers wishing to speak? Seeing no further speakers, we'll now move on to the presentation of papers. And we will begin with Councilman Burgess, Chair of Human Resources. Councilman Coghill for Councilman Burgess? I don't believe he has any. Thank you. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
There are new papers.
Thank you. Councilwoman Groves, Chair of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Councilwoman Groves presents Bill Number 1308, Resolution Adopting a Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the Lawrence Hall Project, which proposes the improvements to an existing building for the use of a food hall and bar. The site address is 4609 Butler Street in the 9th Ward.
Thank you. That takes us to Councilman Kraus, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
There are new papers, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. That takes us to myself, Chair of Finance and Law, Madam President.
Thank you.
Madam President. I'm not sure what to call you.
I didn't know what to call him.
Yeah.
I'm gonna call him that right now, okay?
Councilwoman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1309, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Spillman Thomas &amp; Battle for Legal Services in Connection with a Police Litigation Matter for an Amount Not to Exceed $17,023.80. Bill Number 1310, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements with Campbell Durant, PC, in an Amount Not to Exceed $30,000 for Expert Legal Services Related to Litigation in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania. Bill Number 1311, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with the Allegheny County Bar Association to Provide Legal Advertising to the City of Pittsburgh for Performing State-Mandated Advertising of Treasurer Sales. Bill Number 1312, Resolution Authorizing the Execution of a Quick Claim Deed, conveying all of the city's right, title, and interest in and to the city-owned property located in the 15th Ward of the city at 624 Tesla Street, designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County as Block 55M, Lot 302, and Block 55M, Lot 305, to the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority. Bill 1313, Resolution Amending Resolution 724 of 2022, entitled "Resolution Making Appropriations to Pay the Expenses of Conducting the Public Business of the City of Pittsburgh and for Meeting the Debt Charges Thereof for the Fiscal Year Beginning January 1, 2023, so as to reopen the 2023 Operating Budget to Update the Revenue Forecast to Better Reflect Fiscal Year 2022 Results, Accommodate Changes in the Bureau of Police in Direct Response to the Ratified Collective Bargaining Agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police, and Make Changes to Associated Benefit Calculations." Bill 1314, Resolution Amending Resolution 745 of 2022, which authorizes stop the violence fund expenditures for the 2023 fiscal year by supporting, by further updating current year appropriations in direct response to operating budget changes required by the Ratified Collective Bargaining Agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police. And Bill 1315, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter 210, Acceptance of Gifts to the City of the City Code, the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Accept a Donation from the Charles Street Area Corporation in the Amount of $101,000 for the Cross Strauss Park renovation.
Thank you. That takes us to Councilman Strasburger, Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services. Chair. We'll go with chair. That takes us to Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology. Thank you. Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
There are new papers, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And then myself, on behalf of Madam President, Kail Smith.
Council President Kail Smith presents Bill Number 1316, Resolution Reappointing Lisa Frank as a Board Member of the Equipment Leasing Authority for a Term to Expire March 31st, 2028. Bill 1317, Resolution Appointing Monica Ruiz as a Member of the Planning Commission for a Term Set to Expire January 1st, 2028. Bill Number 1319, Resolution Informing Council of the Reappointment of Leonard Orbavich as a Member of the LGBTQIA+ Commission for Terms Set to Expire December 31st, 2025. And Bill 1320, Resolution Informing Council of the Reappointment of Marcus Robinson as a Member of the LGBTQIA+ Commission for Terms Set to Expire December 31st, 2025. And Bill Number 1321, Resolution Informing Council of the Reappointment of Jam Hammond as a Member of the LGBTQIA+ Commission for Terms Set to Expire December 31st, 2025.
So, members, Bill 1317 is a new appointment. Would you prefer to have a motion to read, receive, or file, or a motion to hold for an interview? Bill 1317 is Monica Ruiz to the Planning Commission. It's a new appointment.
I'd like to hold for an interview, please.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill will be held for an interview. The remaining bills are informing of reappointments, so we need a motion to read, receive, and file.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All bills will be received, read, received, and filed. We will now move on to unofficial business. We have a number of appointments. Under, oh, here we go. Madam Clerk.
Bill Number 1183, Resolution Appointing Annalise Martinez as a Member of the Public Art Committee of the Public Art and Civic Design Commission for Term Concurrent with that of the mayor. Bill 1222, Resolution Appointing Tammy Thompson as a Member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board as the Low-Income Home Owner Representative for a Term to Expire April 30th, 2025. Bill 1237, Resolution Appointing Sanji Mandahara as a Member of the Clean Pittsburgh Commission, Pittsburgh Public Schools Representative, for Term Set to Expire December 31st, 2027. Bill Number 1238, Resolution Appointing Kelsey Ripper as a Member of the Clean Pittsburgh Commission as the Community Organization Representative for a Term Set to Expire December 31st, 2027. And Bill 1239, Resolution Appointing Deborah Steinberg as a Member of the Clean Pittsburgh Commission as the University Representative for a Term Set to Expire December 31st, 2027.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All have been approved. Is there any further unfinished business from members? Seeing none, our next order of business is reports on committee for final action. Madam President, on behalf of myself.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1301, Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for March 8th, 2023, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1253, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of Two Warrants, $15,000 Each in Connection with the EEOC Matter for a Total Amount of $30,000 in Full and Final Settlement of Litigation Including Attorney's Fees. Bill 1254, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Maryanne Organ and Eugene Organ, her husband and their attorneys, Edgar Snyder and Associates, in the Amount of $75,000 Relating to the Full and Final Settlement of a Case File in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill 1272, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter 210, Acceptance of Gifts to the City of the City Code, the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to Accept a Donation from Global Canine Protection Group Valued at $10,000 for a Pre-trained Explosive Detection Canine. Bill 1273, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter 210, Acceptance of Gifts to the City of the City Code, the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to Accept a Donation from AMGARD of $7,900 for the Purchase of a Canine for the Bureau of Police. And Bill Number 1274, Resolution Authorizing Eight Open-End Professional Services Agreements with Multiple Vendors to Provide Professional Services on an On-Call Basis as Required Related to Art and Memorial Preservation and Conservation Services as Need About of Various Departments of the City of Pittsburgh, each agreement being at an Amount Not to Exceed $500,000 Annually for a Two-Year Term with Up to Two Additional One-Year Options and Providing for Funding of the Costs Thereof.
You have heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the role?
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Groves.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus. Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, Chair.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, apologies. I couldn't find my mute button. Aye, please, on all bills.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill having received the legally required numbers of votes is passed finally. That moves us to Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1302, Reported a Committee on Public Safety and Wellness for March 8th, 2023, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1268, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Vanderhaus Gil German Shepherds, Inc., in an Amount Not to Exceed $7,900 for the Purchase of One Canine for the Bureau of Police.
Thank you. You have heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the role?
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Groves.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, Chair.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill having received the legally required numbers of votes is finally passed. That takes us to Councilman Bruce Kraus, Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 1303, Reported a Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for March 8th, 2023, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1270, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 679 of 2012, which authorized the City of Pittsburgh to Enter into a Project and License Agreement with Riverlife to Provide Capital Improvements and Renovations to Allegheny Landing Park by Further Authorizing a City Contribution to Dock Repair Work at a Cost Not to Exceed $150,000. Bill Number 1271, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Electro Coat Company in the Amount of $29,800 for Improvements to the Vietnam War Memorial Project.
You have heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? If none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the role?
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Groves.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, Chair.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill having received the legally required numbers of votes is passed finally. That moves us on to Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Committee on Human Resources.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Councilman Burgess presents Bill Number 1307, Reported a Committee on Human Resources for March 8th, 2023, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1266, Resolution Providing for a Professional Services Agreement with the Mark Hamilton Esquire of Summers, McDonald, Houdak, Guthrie, and Routh, PC, to Provide Legal Representation as a Solicitor of the Commission on Human Relations in an Amount Not to Exceed $25,000. as a Solicitor of the Commission on Human Relations in an Amount Not to Exceed $25,000. And Bill 1267, Resolution Providing for a Professional Services Agreement with Ruderlaw for Legal Services Related to the Enforcement of City Code, Chapter 65903, Unlawful Housing Practices in an Amount Not to Exceed $125,000.
You have heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received the legally required numbers of votes is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1304, Reported a Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for March 8, 2023, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1277, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Platform, Inc., in the Amount of $32,557.75 for Design Services and Template Creation for the Print Version of the Oakland Plan adopted as the Oakland Area Component of the City's Comprehensive Plan.
You have heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bills having received the legally required numbers of votes is passed finally. That moves us to Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Committee on Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 1305, Reported a Committee on Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services for March 8, 2023, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1283, Resolution Providing for the Designation and Transfer of Certain Public Properties Within the Upper Lawrenceville and Stanton Heights Neighborhoods to Become Permanent Public Passive Open Space Included in Allegheny River Greenway as Part of the Greenways for Pittsburgh's Program.
Thank you. You have heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills having received the legally required numbers of votes is passed finally. Lastly, that will take us to Councilwoman Barbara Warwick, Committee on Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 1306, Reported a Committee on Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology for March 8, 2023, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1275, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 568 of 2019, Authorizing an Amendment or Amendments to the Existing Rooftop License Agreement Between the City of Pittsburgh and 600 GS Prop LP at Pennsylvania Limited Partnership in Order to Extend the Term through December 31, 2028, at a Cost Not to Exceed $380,387.56. And Bill Number 1276, Resolution Providing for the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements with RootSmart Technologies, Inc., which Provides Trash and Recycling Routing Optimization for the Purchase and Implementation of Navigation Software that Will Provide Turn-by-Turn Directions to Environmental Service Drivers at a Cost Not to Exceed $149,740 through December 31, 2025.
You have heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to, actually, I have a little bit to follow up on, on both of these bills. Firstly, 1275, which is the 387, says 387, it's 380,000, 387 dollars. Oh, I got it. For the kind of space to rent on the top of the steel building for what isn't just an antenna, but an actual 360-degree camera. And in the testimony last week, our public safety testified that they do not monitor this camera. And so I think that's really important. So I'm, you know, in the conversation, I got kind of uncomfortable with the equipment and the costs that we're investing in monitoring, right? Like, we've struggled with this over the years. We've had post-agendas and public hearings about police equipment and the degree to which we, we don't want to surveil our citizens, and our citizens don't want to be surveilled. And so it was important to me that the police testified that they are not actually actively ever monitoring this camera because it has been upgraded over the years, is one of the things that they also mentioned. So while council kind of authorized its installation, we heard in the testimony at the table last Wednesday that they have actually upgraded the camera equipment, and I interpret that to mean that the camera is more powerful than the camera that was first installed. And so that's a little concerning. But then also, we also have in place ordinances that, so my colleagues here, I've actually forgotten who sponsored banning facial recognition technology in our police equipment, and I think that's important. And there are probably, I think, a few other safeguards in place. This is going to continually be a shifting conversation as technology changes, and so I just wanted to kind of call attention to it. I'm going to vote in support today because we know that this equipment has been used for truly keeping the public safe when there have been large events, and has been useful in protecting the peace. But again, we don't want to cross that line into surveilling our citizens. So I just wanted to call attention to that, but I am going to vote in the affirmative today. And then secondly, Bill 1276, we had a lengthy conversation about, and I just wanted to also recall that we now have several different kinds of vehicles in our environmental services fleet. Some of them I've objected to, some of them are too long to make turns, some of them have their variety of kinds of fueling in different locations. And so we've actually, in our transitioning the fleet, made routing more difficult. I think that we have some vehicles that are appropriate for some streets and not others, some vehicles that have to be fueled in some places but not others. And so as a reminder, we're hoping that by authorizing this expenditure, we're going to resolve some of the problems that have been created by this difference in vehicles in the fleet. So I will be voting for both 1276 as well. But thank you, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, just to, Madam President?
I just want to say that the one I'm voting no on is 1276, because of the same comments I made last week. I see us doing, and I think the director is doing a great job, and I think all the employees are doing a great job, but I have an issue with putting all this technology into our efforts instead of, I think, we should be trying to figure out ways to pick the trash up instead of using technology and all these areas that we're using. Because if I saw the benefit of it, then I would say, okay. But I don't see the benefit to the residents. So that's it for me. I just want people to know why I'm voting no.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing not, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye on 1275, no on 1276.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes on Bill 1275, and seven ayes, one no on Bill 1276.
Thank you. The bills having received the legally required numbers of votes is passed finally. That takes us to motions and resolutions. Is there anything from members under motions and resolutions? If not, we do have one meeting announcement. Council Standing Committee Meeting is scheduled for 10:00 a.m. tomorrow, Wednesday, March 15. To register to speak at this meeting, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage, or call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Speaker registration will close at 9:00 a.m. tomorrow morning. With that, we now need a motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.[1755.86]